Tuesday, March 1, 2022 at 7:00 PM. And I'd like to call a regular Board of Trustees meeting for the Village of North Hudson to order. I have a short invocation. Father, we ask you to intercede with the leaders in Russia to cease their attack on the innocent people of Ukraine and restore peace. Roll call, please.
Trustee Matts, absent. Trustee McGurran?
Here.
Trustee Nelson?
Here.
Trustee Noonan?
Here.
Trustee Pike?
Here.
President Weckin?
Here.
Trustee Zeiss?
Here.
Thank you. Item two is review and improvements from the regular board meeting of February 1, 2022.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Brian, is there a second?
I second that.
Mary?
Amy.
Amy, okay. I can't tell when you guys, I can't see your lips move. So, is there any comments, questions, additions, or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor of the minutes as posted, signal by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Okay, item three is comments from the floor. It's an opportunity for residents to make the board aware of topics, issues, and opportunities either on or not on today's agenda. And if there's going to be any comments, I'm guessing that most everybody here is here for item five. And if you make a comment now, you're going to be limited to two minutes. And we'll need to have you state your name and your address. And then we'll go on from there.
Step up to the mic.
What's that? Step up to the mic, absolutely.
I just have questions. Does that mean if...
We can't, they can't hear you out there if you haven't...
This was just for you if...
You can't do anything for, you can't do anything for us? So, we need it to be all like, so you can't just ask Stan a question? It has to be for everyone.
I just wanted to ask the question if you were saying that if we had something to say about that item five, we should say it now?
No.
That's what I was asking.
They could say it now because when, once we come up with that, then we don't usually take any, any questions or comments from...
Okay, so now would be the time.
Unless we would have questions for the coalition. And then we would, you know, as I talked to Mark earlier, that if we have questions, because we've had several presentations, I'm sure pretty much is pretty much there. And we're...
Well, then I'll just say my comment. I'm Mary Beth Mathia from, do I give my address?
Please.
Okay, 210 Seventh Street North. And I just want to thank you all for being here and for this wonderful coalition. And I just wanted to advocate in favor of this just because it's had so much citizen participation and many people coming. And I think it's a community builder in so many ways. And when we want to have a democratic, you know, government that's responsive, this seems like a really good thing that's happening. And it helps the businesses along the corridor and stuff because there'll be more people coming in. And also, I just wanted to say that, you know, I heard that some of the funding might be from the COVID thing. And this is an opportunity we won't get. And for pandemic, so the future, we'll need these outdoor spaces so that we can gather and so that we can walk safely and things like that. So, it does fit in it, in mental health. As so many people know, getting stuck inside your houses all the time isn't really healthy for the mental health. And this park would build community and it would build mental health because they're finding so many studies on how important being out in nature is for our mental health. So, I think it does fit a health concept and a community building. And obviously, with lots of people interested, it shows that it brings people back into democracy. So, thank you for your service and thanks for listening.
Thank you, Mary.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello again, I'm Dan Schmidt. I live at 756 Summit Lane North. Thanks for giving me a chance to speak and for being here representing all the citizens of North Hudson. I am here to speak in favor of the resolution to work with the other municipalities to possibly look for an opportunity to develop that property better for the area and for people to use. I do realize today, you're not taking action to spend any money, per se, but to continue to look at options and to work with those other municipalities. I have attended meetings going back to October for the park board. And I know there's been a fair number of people that have attended those meetings and been positive about it and things. And I appreciate people being willing to step up and do that. So, I just wanted to, again, just give my support for the opportunity to continue to look at options. So, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Anyone else? Okay, on item four, reschedule of the April Village Board and Finance Committee meeting to 29 March due to spring elections in April. So moved.
Second.
Thank you. We've done this just about every year, I think. So, is there any other discussion or questions about it? Hearing none, all in favor of rescheduling the April Village Board meeting to March 29, signal by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item five, Resolution 2022-02, forming work group for potential rail bridge project discussion possible approved.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Discussion.
So, I have one question for Paul. So, Paul, the resolution, basically, this is allowing us the opportunity to form this group and be part of that group? Doesn't bind us to anything at this point, correct?
Correct. Yeah, it doesn't obligate you to spend any money. It's, you're going to join the other two municipalities in exploring alternatives is the way I read it. You're not committing to do anything. You are gathering information, seeing if it's feasible, seeing what the options are.
And then Melissa, you're the one that wrote up this resolution?
It was a sample resolution that was given by the Trails Coalition.
Okay.
And then it was amended slightly by the City of Hudson when they adopted it. And then I amended it slightly as well.
Well, there's been several iterations of this over the months that this has been going on.
It's changed, it started coming from the Coalition first.
Yeah, I just, I just want to say, I mean, we've, you know, this has been going on for several years. And, you know, the village is, again, we're willing to consider, you know, being in a discussion group. But I have, still have trouble with this resolution is that, you know, it says to consider and explore the potential acquisition. It says consider it possibly, but explore, but we don't know that, to me, that's, you're starting to commit, possibly commit funds to it. The railroad trestle with the surrounding jointly owned properties located there, that's between the city and the village. I mean, most, or most of this property is in the Village of North Hudson, in our limits. And I'm concerned of, you know, there was, at one time, that there was no real impact on taxes. Well, it comes down to it, you know, it's, to a lot of people, it's not a lot of money. But to a village with the budget that we have, it is a lot of money to us. And if we lose it there, we have to make it up elsewhere. And I don't plan on cutting staff or, you know, the biggest thing that I'd like to have is to be able to keep our staff and to be able to pay more. I mean, there's nice to haves and there's half to halves. And since I've been on this board, we've concentrated on half to halves. And I consider this a nice to have. It would be very nice to have, I agree with that. But I don't, right now, in the final paragraph where, you know, it says, we, part of this group and also the filing of legal instruments to bring parcels surrounding the basement is enumerated in the map attached to Appendix A. Well, to me, filing legal instruments is money. You know, I don't, unless we got lawyers around here that will and work for free or pro bono on this, you know, I mean, to me, that's an issue. I mean, and in this, I think they can say, well, you agreed to, you know, to the legal instruments. And, you know, one of the first things is, is there going to be a feasibility study? I mean, we haven't seen any of that. There's talk of two different bridges being constructed, which is a G I enormous amount of money. We found out today that the county is paying, how much, Brian?
Half a million a half mile.
Half a million a half mile to create bike paths through a section north of here. And that's on dirt, that's not building bridges. So, I honestly, I cannot, I cannot support this. But if the board votes to, to go ahead with it, I will support their, I will put a couple of people on it and to see what, what you come up with.
Paul, I have a question. Does this obligate the board to any funds at all?
I don't read it as obligating you to anything. It's to participate in the group, to explore acquisition and which could include legal instruments. But you're not, if it gets to that point, then, you know, you're going to have to look at funding from some source. But we're not doing that right now, today.
And it's my understanding there's potential with the other partners. We have a letter of support in our packet from the City of Hudson, from St. Croix County, and from the St. Croix County EDC, Economic Development Corporation. And we understand from previous presentations from the Coalition that they have potential funding for support for this exploration through other grant funding. So, I just want to put that on the table.
Say the last statement again, Mary.
They have, they're exploring grant funding for this exploration as well.
Exploring, yeah, okay. Well, I know grants are something that everybody likes to, you know, claim or get onto. But as long as I've been doing this job, it, I've yet to see a grant that you didn't have to pony up more than half of the money usually. Sometimes, you know, it's through different road projects, it's less. But if you're getting a grant, there's got to be matching funds or a percentage thereof. So, that's, that's where I'm concerned. Because we, the village, as everyone that paid attention knows, we had, we hit our levy limit this year and we had to cut from our budget that, for, you know, to do stuff for public works or to increase with, with public safety. And we had to do some cuts there in order to, to get our balanced budget. And I do not see anything going on in the village where we're going to have much of a budget or a levy increase, even with the ZAP40 fully developed. I don't think that's going to, wouldn't boost us to the millions of dollars that'll be necessary to get this job done.
President Weckin, I think that those are all very legitimate concerns. But I also would like to say that there has been tremendous community support for this, that we have a history here of, for a very small village, being able to come together and do some tremendous things. An example would be the Pepperfest organization and individual community members who contribute in amazing ways. Also, that we are not in this alone, where if I understand it correctly, when we talk about going back 10 years, at some points, maybe we were looking at it alone. And right now, we have the commitment of several partners to explore that together. We're not doing it alone. And I also have been attending those park board meetings as well for quite some time and have also gone back online and looked at some of the meetings at some of the other entities. And I have to say that the members of this coalition, the St. Croix Pedestrian and Bike Coalition, seem like a really amazing group. Smart, hardworking, they already have successes under their belt. And if it was just us coming up with this, you know, I would be thinking something differently. But I personally really believe that as leaders for our community, we owe it to our residents and to future generations to at least meet with the other parties at the table and give serious consideration to this opportunity without assuming it's impossible.
For me, I'm, in all sincerity, I'm a little scared. We have currently named 11 parks, technically speaking, I think we have 16 or 15. And so, the idea of you guys of, we move this forward and then you come ask us for money, and then we have, we move that forward, what are my other 11 parks are going to do? I have two pickleball courts I'm trying to move forward. So, for me, in all sincerity, I have no problem with moving this forward because the idea of helping and helping, but then when you guys come back to me and you ask me for my park money, it's really going to hurt. Because you're making me choose between 11 parks and maybe your park. So, a lot of times that, it scares me.
And with the partnerships, the village has been in partnerships with Hudson and the county before and still are in a couple of them. But it just seems that the village usually comes out on the short end of the stick. I mean, we've had issues up at the dump property where they, there was complaints for, from our citizens about a dust issue. And Hudson said, well, that's in the village limits. It's up to them. No, that's part of the City of Hudson that we lose tax money on. But I mean, it's, it's, you know, but, and then we had the, the bridge in the winter, first the county was plowing the sidewalks and then they said, we're not going to do that. And then the city was taking part of it. And they said, oh, we're done doing that. So, we got an extra piece of equipment so that we could take care of it so the people could walk on the bridge. I mean, I've said for years, we've got, we've got bike paths and we've got pedestrian paths, it's called sidewalks and roads. And this new highway that we put out here, I believe their sign's going to be going up to, to address that as a bike path. And, and yes, I understand that there's people that are concerned about safety on the highway and the speeds and everything like that. But all over the country, there's bike paths in the streets and places in other parts of the country, there's bike paths and they're still riding in the streets. So, yeah, no, this is, I'm not against meeting with them and seeing how much they're going, you know, what they're going to come up with. I've been really interested in seeing how, if that bridge is structurally, what's left of the railroad bridge is structurally sound. And I'm also concerned about the remediation of possible poisons and/or, you know, whatever the railroad may have dumped there. So, or had spill or whatever. I mean, everybody knows that railroad ties have creosote in them and that's, you know, that'll be a cause for remediation. So, the costs involved in this are just, to me, are astronomical for even to be considering it. But again, I'm not against going, you know, having a team that meets with them. But I, you know, I myself, I cannot support it.
So, what I'm hearing is that we've got support for the concept and for exploring this partnership, that there's a lot of concern about what that could mean in the future. But at this point, the exploration and getting the information to find out the answer to some of those questions is supported by the board. It's a concern for their...
Well, if you have the vote...
Okay, but I'm reacting to what I'm hearing.
Yeah, well, I'm, I'm stating, this is all on me. As I've told people, you know, everybody thinks this job is a big job. I get one vote equal to everyone here. So, I'm just, you know, and at this, I would, I'm hoping that everybody will, you know, express their concerns because that's what we're supposed to do as a board.
Well, I'm in, yep.
And when we're done having discussion, we'll have a vote.
So, I got a couple thoughts.
Well, I'm...
First of all, I'm all for working groups, as you said, especially with our neighbors. They haven't always turned out the best for us, but I think it's a good thing to do. It keeps us in touch with each other. You know how hard we push to get communication working on that water agreement? And I think that's helping across the board. I'm concerned that a feasibility study was not first up so that we could see exactly what this would cost before the working group even got together. The feasibility costs are not cheap, as we had to do one for the water system. They have had funds come in to this coalition to at least do the underwater piece, I think. But without a feasibility study, it's really tough to know what. I would think the first thing on a, on a working group is going to say, okay, we need a feasibility study or we don't know where we're going and what funding we need for this project. So, without a feasibility study, I feel like we're kind of just blind and shooting in the dark. Working together, though, to get that feasibility study means they're, we're going to pay money. I mean, the last feasibility study we, we did was 85,000, if I remember, on the water system. And so, we'd end up splitting that, I assume, three ways to get the feasibility study done. And then we got to send it to our lawyers. And that means probably a lawyer that specializes in this. And that's some additional money. The document mentions a link between the I-94 Bridge and the St. Croix River Crossing Bridge. Talked to the county today, that's exactly what they're doing. They're creating that link. They're going to spend, I forget all the money that he said he was going to spend between the new park on the north. What's that thing called again?
Ricker Pluff.
Yes, Ricker Pluff. They're going to spend some money to go north from there and over to V and over to River Road. Then they're spending money to come south for trails. Some of them will be on the highway, some of them will be completely off the highway. And they're going to connect that to the project that we just did, the 35 project. Because they know the DOT was forced to, or required to widen 35. The stretch between North Hudson and the Malu Bridge is 1.2 miles. At 25 miles an hour with no parking, we told the DOT we didn't want them to put bike trail stripes down, but they're going to put a sign on both ends that say, this is a bike trail. And since our shoulders are free and there's no parking out there and it's 25 miles an hour, it seems like the connecting path that's being looked for in this project between the top of North Hudson and Hudson is already there. And we know how wide the Malu Bridge is. I mean, that's not going to be an issue for the bikes. I'm uncertain about the parcel IDs, Mark. Some of them on Appendix A didn't look like they matched what I can see out on the GIS for the county. Just something to look into. We, if, at the end of the day, another concern that I would have is, obviously, I'm Chair of Public Works and we know that we're building the 40 acres up in the upper corner, the last of our, pretty much the last of our buildable land. And that's going to add more work to Public Works. So, if we were to take on maintenance, part of the maintenance for this park, does that mean we add another Public Works employee to handle that part of the park maintenance? So, these are all things that have to be sorted out. And I'm all for a working group, so don't get me wrong. I just think that we need to be aware of all these items that we're going to be facing with this project. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Brian. Tim McKirk, any?
I'm not going to repeat anything more than what you guys have all said, basically. Chair of the public safety, it just give me one concern for me. Of course, more activity coming into the village is a concern on the public safety side. But other than that, no, I think we could, I'm fine for now.
Then we have to patrol that area at night or whatever because it is in our area. And not, and not that there be people be biking at night, but there'll be people using it if it's turned into a park down there. So...
We do have 85 acres of parkland in the village already as well. Designated parkland.
We have three without names yet.
What's that?
We currently have three parks without names yet.
Well...
We're not working on it.
Save one in case I tip over or something like that.
Hey, I mean, no, sorry, Stan.
But, no, I mean, it's a good discussion. And if you have more that you'd like to, you know, offer or whatever, I'm, like I said, that's why I wanted to, you know, to make sure everybody gets a chance to express their concerns. I mean, we've got, you know, pretty good, you know, there's good people here and, you know, but I've had, I've had as many emails from concerned citizens about it against as I have for. Now, maybe there's a couple more here that I haven't heard from or whatever. So, that, you know, probably would lean a little more toward the bike coalition stuff. But...
You guys did get those emails back in November, right, from residents that were very concerned about having it run through their backyard?
Got concerned, yep. I received both pro and con. I'd say it's two or three to one in favor of, of this. And as this is an exploration, doesn't commit us to any money, doesn't commit us to anything. And it's such a beautiful thought that we could actually have more access to the St. Croix River, the very beautiful St. Croix River, which really makes this area special. We've got a growing municipality here, a growing village. And bringing people close to nature seems like such a wonderful benefit to our, to our citizens and to the, to the children and, and the growing community that we have. So, I, I would love that we could stay open to something like this, knowing that there's a lot of challenges and a lot of history behind it. But it is such a beautiful spot. And it does, as the resolution states, have a lot of history around it with Native Americans, with the railroad, with, with the origins of this area. It just has some real beautiful potential to be a spot to help us root ourselves in history.
I have another question too, where, it was never brought up during the park board, but it was brought forward to me, what happens with the dam? Like, I'm very, like, it, does the county give the two of us the dam part? And that's something too where...
Do you want me to get into that?
Sure.
If you know, yeah. If it stays the same, then it stays the same.
Yeah, does the county still take their percentage of it? Or are we then, once we're into this, do we...
This, this resolution would have nothing to do with the dam. And the discussions that I've had specifically with Ellen Denzer and the city about the dam, the dam agreement, as I understand it, that was entered into in 1969, is in place. And, and so, I mean, the 50%, the 2020 and, and 10 with the town of Hudson stays in place. And so, that whole thing as to who pays what, I use that as an example of what we would do here. And that wasn't something that, number one, the county was interested in as far as cost. But it then raised the issue that we've laid out only for discussion purposes because as you've, as you've written, Brian has raised here, that the, the whole business of that patchwork of property up there, county, city, village, and then county, and then city, and county, city, village. And so, it's, it's a matter of all we're doing here. And what's important is today, March 1st was the filing date for filing with the RTCA. We did it yesterday. We've got approval from the RTCA that if this resolution were to pass tonight, that that would be accepted because it's timely. And the good thing about this is that the RTCA, the River Trails Conservancy Assistance Program, is, they're very interested. This goes to Omaha. They're the ones, because the national parks were, were in that zone. They are overseen by the people in Chicago. The supervisor in Chicago knows about the project because he heard about it last year. He's asked to be kept up to date and he was copied on a separate document. So, this is something they are interested in, again. They will let us know, as I understand it, by as early as possible May 1st, that the, or into May, that this thing would be moving quickly.
Could you explain what the RTCA does and what is moving quickly by May?
The RTCA is the organization of the National Park Service that assists in working with, with various municipalities and, and entities that would move projects forward. It was done in Stillwater, it was done in Hastings Prescott, it was done in St. Paul and Minneapolis. and Minneapolis through the National Park Service, because the natural riverway in both Minneapolis-St. Paul, and then coming through the St. Croix. And so that they, it's a national program, and the final say will come out of Washington. And that what they do is then, they don't like to be referred to as mediators, they're facilitators. So they will be the ones running the meetings with the county, the village, the city, and if, if the economic development people are at the table, too, because anyone that's written a letter of support is committed to being there for at least one year. And so, and that includes the Chamber of Commerce. So it's a matter of the, what they will do is work through, just like a mediator would do, and I did that in my practice, that you, the great thing about mediation is, you don't put the same people in the same room for a while. You at least get them out, find the ideas, work it back and forth as to what, where there's common ground, where there's problems to work from, and that's what this working group will do. And then come back, and if it comes out to say, we don't want to do this, that's all of your things, as you and I have talked, I'm not in the business of selling rainbows here, that this is an opportunity, as I see it, that, that may benefit the whole region, that this isn't just a North Hudson situation. But it's, and again, I fully understand, I understand, I live in the township, I know exactly about the limits there, having to go out for the township to borrow, to plow snow or to borrow to build roads. You don't have to run that way, but that's what the legislature has told you in our township to do, and it's wrong. But that's, that's another topic. But what we're talking about here is at least to have the discussions, and if it turns out that it won't work, then that's, we've at least made that effort, and that's truly all we're doing here.
So the RTCA does not have any grants?
There's no money, as I understand it, and that's, that, so, that the granting process, though, but they will assist us in the facilitation of finding grants. And because of the infrastructure bill and et cetera, the trails and bike paths, because of the fact that they are molds of transportation and avenues of transportation, that that may fall into the infrastructure.
The bimodal part?
Say again?
The bimodal part?
It's my understanding. The other thing is, and this is where you start talking, we've got roads in this 25 miles an hour, as an individual who bikes a lot, that a vehicle, a semi truck or a pickup truck, and one of the scariest things, being on a bicycle, is somebody who hooks up their trailer. They don't have a clue, they can't see out the mirrors, but their trailer is running beyond their truck, and they're coming right down the lane. I have mirrors on, I have a radar on the back of my bike, just to be, look for it. To be hit at 25 miles an hour on a bicycle is going to kill you.
Right.
So it's a situation of, that's why, to get kids off, and as I explained to you, July 4th weekend, I rode from Stillwater to Hudson, and I passed a family, and I, there was a little kid out in front of dad, if that was dad, that the adult behind, and they were out by the valley or by big guys on Highway 35.
Mark, there's no way that you're missing streets to get to the trestle.
I understand that, but.
You're going to be on roads one way or the other?
We are going to be, but it's a matter of markings, et cetera. So what I'm attempting to do here is have a way to get there and do it. So that's all things way down the road, and if it doesn't work out at the meeting, it doesn't work out at the meeting.
Do you know how many RTCA grants are in Wisconsin right now?
I don't, and, and it's.
One.
Okay.
It's up in, it's connecting the two tribes up in the northeast corner of Wisconsin.
And again, it deals with the National Park Service, because, and, and this is, is the big money, as we explained when Julie Galenska was there, the big money went up to Boundary Waters, the big money goes up to, to locations other than the St. Croix River. And that's why they're extremely interested in what's going on here, so.
Thank you.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mark.
Any further discussion from the board? Any further discussion? Hearing none, Amy?
I vote in favor.
Mary?
Should we read the resolution? Need to read it?
It was posted on the website.
Okay, all right.
Don't need to read it?
I don't believe so. Paul?
No, we know what it is. It's in the pack.
Right in front of us.
Okay, thank you. I'm in favor of the resolution, yes.
I have stated my disagreement, I am voting no.
I'm voting no.
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries four to two. Resolution will be in the mail tomorrow. Melissa?
Yeah, I can email it and then email it to them.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Okay, you don't have to stick around for the rest of the meeting, just because you showed up, I'm sure you want to get out and breathe.
You can listen to the rest of this boring stuff.
Although we've got great filtration systems and everything like that, you know, I mean,
I'm sure you want to get out where you can get some fresh air.
We appreciate your opening.
She was all I've ever been. Okay, item six, new business from the board or staff and president's comments. Well, we finally got to March from this, one of the coldest records on winter, and in two weeks, on the 13th, we get to spring ahead for daylight savings time, and so don't forget the century clocks on the 13th, and even better news, the first day of spring is on 3/20, and the only holiday is in St. Patrick's, is St. Patrick's Day, so.
Woot!
What?
St. Patrick's Day.
Well, that's what I said, the only holiday is St. Patrick's Day.
I said woot. You're not Irish. I am, too.
Everybody's Irish on St. Patty's Day.
As am I, at least my last name.
Yeah, okay, so, and, and I want to thank, you know, give thanks to our, our Public Works Department, they've done, they've been understaffed, and they've done a stellar job of cleaning these streets. I mean, that was a pretty good dump the other day. In fact, I was out of town, and I was looking at weather back here, and Hudson made the, made the Channel Nine top snow accumulator at 6.1 inches on that deal, and it's like, well, that's a lot. Unfortunately, where I was in northern New York, we got 10, but, and the full-blown blizzard. But no, and our police department is also short-staffed, and we are trying to, you know, hire on both of the departments, so they, and they've all done a stellar job. I know it's, it's not easy, and the way the world is right now, it's going to be very tense, so I, I can't thank those guys, you guys enough, and your staffs, and Melissa, of course, with the, we've had issues and stuff with people, vacations and not being able to come in, sickness and stuff, so I thank the administrative staff also. Melissa, make sure you tell us about, there's an election coming up.
Yes, the spring election will be on Tuesday, April 5th. Polls will be open from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. In-person absentee voting will begin on Tuesday, March 22nd, and end on Friday, April 1st. There is a link to the candidate forum that was done on February 23rd in the election information section on the Village website.
Thank you, Melissa. Okay, item seven, Plan Commission, and the chair is here. Mike, would you like to step up and tell us about your meeting?
Mike Meiser, Plan Commission? In January, Gary Zappa came to Plan Commission with a concept plan for a subdivision. Actually, it was going to be a planned development district because of the types of homes that would do setbacks and stuff. It was just a concept plan, we had a good discussion, all the members of Plan Commission seemed in favor of it, lots of feedback, and so, a month later, they came back incorporating the feedback we had. Plus, they came to us on February 16th, they had met with Public Works on the 15th. And so, some of the things Plan Commission says, oh, this would be nice, and Public Works says, ah, this would be nicer for us, and so, you know, y'all can handle that up.
Wait a minute, does that work out or not?
You guys are doing the work, you know? We're just sitting behind a desk.
There was a lot of discussion.
Yeah, yeah, good discussions. It was, it was good, and a lot of, people are under commission pretty much in favor of it, very fruitful. One of the biggest things that came out of it was the original concept had two cul-de-sacs. Those are gone. I knew you didn't like that. Mary liked that, a lot of people liked that, makes, makes life easier. Kevin said that we had talked about various street whiffs, to kind of slow down traffic. Kevin said on the meeting with Public Works is, y'all likes things wide and the same, so, again, we'll see what they come up with on their final plans, but they, they heard from what we thought. It connects to the development off to the west, you know, what they're proposing, so that's good, so in case something's wrong with Cradley Lane, people can get out another way. Town of Hudson thought it'd be a good idea to at least engineer a stub to connect off to the east, and so that was in, that was in their proposal.
Is it southeast? Was it the southeast?
It'd be, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
It would head east, but it's on the southeast part of it, is what they figured it'd have to be. The park board recommended the fee instead of the, the actual park, so.
We don't need more parks.
Again, that's the irony of all of it. Even after that vote.
He's already spent it.
We already voted, but the irony is, we don't need more parks, but yeah, I still voted. The money fits us better, the parkland isn't used or very much. Sidewalks came up, and after everybody gave their opinion, even though we weren't voting on anything, I asked for an informal poll, and it was four to two, we have one member missing, four to two said, we really don't need sidewalks there. We're talking 33 acres up north side of Cradley, way out there. But, again, it was just, and curbs came up, again, the engineers thought one type of curb would be good, Public Works likes something else, and so, again, we'll see what they come up with.
But going back to that, you wanted to keep the streets wide enough.
Public Works wants to keep the streets wide enough. Plan Commissions of the, members of Plan Commission, not all, are the opinion that narrower streets slow down traffic in residential areas. And so, if it has to do with making plowing easier or whatever, again, that's, that's for you all to decide.
We asked them to keep the streets the same as Derrick and the curbs.
I understand that, yeah, now you're talking about now, you have no sidewalks, so people have to walk on trees.
Right, right.
So now, going back and forth here, you know.
Yeah, right, you're right.
Just what you're saying, what he's saying.
Well, all I know is we wanted the trees.
I totally understand what you're saying.
On the property owner's side, sidewalks, I, I'm.
We did not discuss sidewalks at Public Works, and I would think that should go to public safety, too. I think it's.
But how it, how it ended up was you're saying is, yeah, is, okay, if we go with the wider streets, then we don't need a sidewalk, is what our consensus was. But again, that's our opinion, this is a concept plan.
Oh, and then go back, there's not wider streets, it means faster speeds.
Is that true? Is that proven, or is that just shooting by the head?
Writing it down.
Okay, we have an engineer that could tell us.
I wrote it down also.
Sure.
There are studies out there that says yes, and there are a few that say no. Mostly, they say yes, narrower streets are slower, it would create, it depends on what we did, if we said no parking on it, you know what the people would say.
That was all brought up, yeah. Depending on the width of the street is whether you'd have parking or not, and for most of it, you probably don't need street parking, so.
Sorry to interrupt you, I just wanted to understand what you guys thought about that. I heard what he said, but I know what you guys actually said, so, all right, good, thank you.
Um, like I say, it was just a concept, just, it was a concept plan, pretty big, it wouldn't need to be rezoned or PDD, but that's what we have for now. How many lots are they looking at, again? In the 80s, low 80s?
Yep, low 80s.
81.
And they're not going to build at all in one phase, no phase at all.
And that is the part of the village that is, or that is part of Cradley that is in the village already.
Right.
It doesn't need to be next.
The infrastructure would go in at first, all at once?
Depending on where they would, you know.
They might, they might do it partial here and part, like Derrick?
Derrick, one, two, and three, yeah.
Okay.
That did come up, we asked Kevin about, you know, sewer and water and stuff, and we have enough, it's sufficient.
What about them?
The existing system is sufficient to handle what they're talking about.
Some of the water mains have been upsized, like 12-inch water mains.
Oh, wow.
So it was beyond the concept, so now they got to come back to these guys.
Got to come back, is safety going to get to weigh in on the sidewalk issue?
They generally don't, generally, developments like this go through Public Works for input for the, you know, utility portion of it, and it's Planning Commission that does it.
So the sidewalks won't come back to the board for, because that, that's a huge concern that I have.
Preliminary plan goes to Planning Commission with input from Public Works and stuff, and Planning Commission.
You all have the final say.
Village Board has final say.
Does this come back one more time after their second concept meeting to Public Works?
Kevin had stated they're coming back with the preliminary plan.
Next would be preliminary.
Okay, gotcha.
So we're, we're early.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, I'll just, I'll share my comment on the sidewalk issue, being a longtime resident of North Hudson on the older side of town, saying, if you want to have a sidewalk, fine, we'll tell people that before they buy their house. Don't come and take hold of front yard and put a sidewalk this far from the picture window as someone proposed about 20 years ago, so. That was my comment.
What did they say about the number of ponds, anything?
They're going to try to downsize, I mean, there's quite a few that are shown on the concept plan.
Seven, I think, or six.
We talked about that at Plan Commission.
Okay.
And, and, and for the, the parks type people, they're connecting walking trails and things with the existing thing, so everything's connected into a nice loop, is what they're proposing.
So potentially timeframe here, we're talking back to the Planning Commission, back to Public Works, we're talking another two months.
Oh, yeah.
And then approval through us, three months, four months, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I mean, it was two concepts, I mean, so that was pretty nice. We had a concept, and then they took the feedback and came back with, with, yeah, I was pleased, it looks like a very nice project so far.
I watched one of them, I thought it was pretty good.
So do they still have the bulb?
I'm sorry.
Do they have the bulb instead of the, did you get rid of the bulb?
I think they got rid of the bulb.
They're going to take that.
Yeah.
Okay.
We didn't see a need for it either. Hey, you guys ask for it, you get almost everything you want.
We don't.
I mean, even that six-inch snowfall, I mean, there was nine inches at the bottom of my driveway.
It was eight on nine.
I don't know who put it there.
Well, it is a Minnesota station, so.
Very good.
And that's all we did, we had that.
Thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good update.
Okay, item eight, Personal and Finance Committee recommendations, claims approval requested.
Stan, can I move to approve the December 2021 non-recurring claims of $2,612.70 in March 2022, non-recurring claims of $117,692.51?
Thank you, Kirk, is there a second?
Second.
Thanks, Tim. Discussion?
What do we got on there, Melissa?
There is, the first half of the fire contract is one of the big items in that $58,000. A portion of the assessor contract, our new copier is in there, which, it's all budgeted items. New radios for public police, new radio for the police department. The other big item is a portion of the Highway 35 water and sewer portion.
Everything we budgeted for.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, Tim?
Yes.
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 Thank you. Item B, amend employee's handbook to revise Public Works licensure slash certification language, approval requested.
Stan, move to amend the employee handbook to revise Public Works licensure slash certification language as provided on the attached document.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mary. There's a discussion.
What I'm trying to do is not require someone to have a CDL just to apply, that they have a certain amount of time to get it while they're here, hopefully broadening the focus that we can get for applications, because those are getting pretty slow.
And so will the cost of obtaining that be on the person or on the village? And I'm totally fine if it's on us, I'm just curious.
That was something that Melissa had.
We haven't discussed that yet.
I guess we're not really sure yet.
Yep, that's something for a future.
Because an applicant may want to know.
Yes.
Yeah, but that's, we have some work to do before we get to that point.
Okay.
Anything else? Hearing nothing. Hearing nothing, amendment to employee handbook, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Thank you. Item C, sale, auction of Public Works Ford F-550 used snowplowing vehicle, approval requested.
Stan, we recommend permission to place a 2011 F-550 pickup slash plow on Wisconsin's surplus action website with proceeds from the sale to go in Public Works Vehicle Assigned Fund.
Thank you, Brian, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Discussion?
Okay, so, we want to take the, we think we can get by without it for a little while, but we also think because the price of used vehicles are so high right now, we could be looking at, what'd you say, 43?
I'm not sure.
But somewhere, a good price for this 2011, and because of that, it's also like two years out before we can get a replacement now, so we'd like to, yes, so we'd like to get that going. So sell the one, get that money coming in, and get that new one on order.
It's budgeted for the new one.
And it is budgeted, it's budgeted at 80.
Eighty-nine.
Eighty-nine.
So we wouldn't have a plow for two years?
No.
No.
It's just a little one they don't use. Well, right now with the loader and the, and the, and the big truck, I think that's pretty much, and then the skid steer, you know what I mean?
We're blessed to have other equipment to get us through this, that where we think we could sneak this out and find a new one for two years from now, because we're nervous we can't get another one then.
It's not the plow truck. It's the one with the box on the back.
Yeah.
It has a plow attached, we can use a plow on it, and it doesn't get used very often.
Because of the new equipment we have since secured, got it. It's just, it's, I'm trying to make sense of something that we don't need for two years that we need. If we, do we, I mean, do we need it, or do we not need it?
Well, we're hopefully going to be full staffed, we're, you know, we're using the big truck, the loader, and the new truck, then they won't have to use as much time in the skid steer, which is slower and cuts less of a path, I believe. Correct me if I'm wrong, Patrick.
We do, we do need it, it's not, that's not the issue, the issue is that we're, and every municipality is going through this, is we're in a bad spot trying to get things. The prices are increasing by leaps and bounds. My fear is that we won't even be able to replace that pickup for the money that we have budgeted, so my thought process is to get rid of this, get a good price for it, get another one ordered. Hopefully, being able to pay for it without having to come back and ask for more money, because that's the last thing that I want to do. And then, if there's any, you know, whatever, outfitting or whatever, anything extra that we need on it, we can use those, those proceeds for that, but we can get by without it. It's not that we don't necessarily need it, because in the summertime, we do use it a lot. We don't have it this summer, we'll end up using the MAC, which is, you know, is doable, but it's not the most optimum thing. But in my mind, to try to save a little bit of money, maybe get a little bit extra out of this and get something ordered, I think this is the best way to do it, rather than waiting, we wait another year, we don't know what the market's going to do, that pickup could be worth a third of that, what it's worth now in a year, we don't know that.
Isn't it possible that you had found one that could be available, I don't know if it's still available, it's gone? So, I mean, it's possible if one came about, they could get it sooner. The two years is just a far-off, that's just a guess.
If I could find something before that, yes, I will do that.
Thank you.
And you're looking for used?
Anything else? Hearing, no further discussion, all in favor of the sale or auction of the Public Works truck, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Item nine, Public Works Committee Recommendations, Brian?
Move to approve St. Croix Street North Mill and overlay, overlay road project with amount not to exceed $80,000.
Second.
Thank you.
So this, we have an L-RIP that we have to spend by...
2023.
Yeah, June 30th of 2023.
Okay.
What's an L-RIP?
Local...
Local road improvement, improvement project.
Thank you.
I'm getting better at these acronyms. So, there's 10% built on here for contingency, we're going to get, the L-RIP's giving us back about 18, and then the residents along St. Croix from 3rd Street to 7th Street would be assessed 50% of that remaining amount. So if we, if we spent eight, if we spend 80 and we take the 18 off of that and we got 62, half of that, 62, the 31 will get assessed to the property owners along St. Croix. That is what's in our ordinance, that's how it works.
And it would, and they would be on a payment.
Yeah.
It's not all like one hit.
Yeah, they don't have to do it all at once, they can do it in...
I still think you can do 15.
Is it, I think it's five, right?
It really depends on the price, but the price would have to be pretty high.
Oh, that's why the pine fee would have been different, because the price, okay, fair, fair point.
It depends on the assessment amount, determines how many years.
Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Anything else, Brian?
So it's a lease agreement?
No, any other questions?
So are we approving the spending and the assessment right now, or just, just the spending?
Just the project.
Just the project, okay.
Yes, because there's possibilities that the board will have to consider, maybe at the next board meeting. It can be funded, the options are really use of available funds or ARPA funds, so it's, the board will have to look at what they, and decide then what they, how they want to fund it. Right now, it's just, you're just approving the project.
Okay, and when we look at that, will we be able to get some information on the history of how we've done this historically with assessments, not assessments, funding, et cetera?
Oh, I'm not sure.
Special assessment?
Yeah, we have a...
For something we have to go through preliminary, and then all...
Have it all laid out?
Yep, all the providers and I do what they're anticipating assessments are going to be.
Perfect, thank you.
Mary, were you here for the Highway 35 activity when people show up for that one?
Mm-hmm.
Right?
It'll be like that.
Yep. I'm just wondering how the money will compare for people's assessments and...
Good point.
And that was for their own pipes when we did that, it wasn't for the actual street?
Right, correct, but it's the same type of process when you determine how much is going to be assessed.
Anything else? Hearing none, Amy?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes. Yes.
Thank you. Item ten, Public Safety Committee Recommendations, Chair update.
Stan, there was a meeting, but we have nothing carried forward today.
Thank you, Tim. Public Welfare, Kirk.
We did not meet.
Did not meet, and Park Board, how about that?
We did meet, and we already went through our agenda.
Okay, thank you. All right, that brings us to 13, which we may convene into closed session. Paul, get any response from them?
Wait, wait, are we in closed session right now?